Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 3E, Historic Map. Counselor Shakespeare.
With your permission, I'd like to go to the map.
I don't know if the micro-
Well, if you don't step on it, oh well. There you go. I'll be on the opposite side I'd like to be on, but that's okay. What you're looking at here is an 1859 map of Penobscot County. The state of Maine apparently back in 1859 had this company HF Wallings, actually make a map of every county in the state of Maine. And this is the county we own and of course Penobscot. It has every town on it and also it also has every residence, the main owner of that residence, on that map in the community. What I'd like to zone in on is basically Hampden. It is so old that Patterson Road does not exist on this map in 1859. That was put in later as apparently Patterson's moved in and had a farm on Patterson Road. There are numerous schools. There's a school almost on every corner of every road. I think I looked in the history maps and history data and, you know, 13 schools in the town, something like that, but they were all one-room schoolhouses. And a number of them still do exist. The Quonis Hall used to be a school up on, oh, it's not Emerson Mill Road, but Shawhill Road, the second house on the left. That used to be a one-room schoolhouse. In fact, one of our town workers, Donnie McLean, used to go to school there when he was a boy. The center of Hampden at this time was at the corner of Emerson Mill Road and Western Avenue, which was Route 9 back then. Of course, Patterson Road went from that point down afterwards. They used to be called the center of Hampden and basically because it was the center of Hampden. Because it was, they had West Hampden, East Hampden, South Hampden, and North Hampden. And of course, East Hampden, which we call, basically is North Hampden. There's a lower corner and the upper corner, right out here at Irving's, was called the Upper Corner. The Lower Corner was down at the Kennebec Road. Back then, Route 1A, believe it or not, used to be called the Atlantic Road because that road went from Bangor to the Atlantic. And many of the roads were named, if you look at the map in Hampden here, mainly like Emerson Mill Road because there was a brick mill at the end of the road owned by people called Emerson's. Dear Hill Lane, in fact, near where I live, up off Western Avenue, did not exist then, but there was a road that went up through there and there were houses up there. People actually living up there and then that was discontinued many years later. Summer Street, many of you are familiar with, the corner of Summer Street and Kennebec, used to be the most populated area in Hampden. And if you look at the map, you can see all the names on the residences. And the reason it was the most populated area is because of Ferry Street, where the ferry used to come in. And that's how people used to go to Bangor and to Boston and to other places. So it's really interesting if you, if you look at the map in general, it has Bangor on it. A lot of the businesses in Bangor and the streets. It's so old that the railroads actually do not interconnect. The railroad coming north stops where the concert area is right now. And the other railroad coming down past where Eastern Main Medical Center is now just shows a line that says Proposed Railroad. There was no railroad station at that time, but there was an inlet there where all the sailing ships used to dock and unload their cargo. And basically, the history of that area and the river is that a lot of the sailing ships stopped docking there when the railroad came through because it was a lot easier to ship the goods on the railroad than it was on sailing ships. Just like a lot of the railroads have lost businesses by 18-wheelers because it was a lot easier to, nowadays because of the interstate highways, to ship goods on highways with 18-wheelers than it is to put them on a railroad flatbed. So it's very, very interesting to look at this. And this map, I acquired it a number of years ago and I've actually had it up in my garage where it's dry. And I just felt it was time to do something with it. And I've always wanted to donate it to the town of Hampden and have it placed basically where it is to move the quote over to where I am here and have the map encased, which I've been trying to do basically, or some of us have with the town for the last two years, and it just never get done. So basically, either we're going to do it now or we're not going to do it because this map is deteriorating. And like I have said before, there is one similar, not similar, identical actually to it in the Historic Society, but unfortunately, since the 1800s, it was folded, or rolled, I should say, just the opposite direction this one is. If you look at the top, you can see how the top is deteriorated. And the bottom, which is where Bangor and Hampden and all the other communities like Newburgh are, it's in very good shape. And now is the time to preserve it, frame it, and I'd like to see it retained by Hampden and on the wall here so all the residents who's come in can come in and look at it. And of course, it should be covered with acetate or something because that way people aren't going to be poking it with pencils and pens. So, thank you.
Bill, I have a question, sir. Kennebec clean? What would the cost be? Are there any guarantees to it? How long would it take? And what is your vision, in addition to what you just described, for this whole project? Where would, I think it should be there on a permanent basis?
Well, I'm going to let the first, your first question, so I'm going to let Sue. Sue hasn't investigated it actually with a firm in Bangor. Do you want to answer the first question, Sue? Please.
I did not explore having it cleaned. I, the request of me was to find out the cost of matting and having it matted and put appropriately in a case. And that's between $1,000 and $1,500. And that came from Bangor Frameworks.
Who would do that work?
What's that?
Who would do that work?
Bangor, Bangor Frameworks in downtown Bangor does things this large. We looked at AC Moore. They, they only do things they can ship, so nothing can be bigger than four feet and width or length. But Bangor Frameworks in downtown Bangor has done map mountings before because it's not just putting it in a big frame. It, it needs to be attached in some way because of the weight of it will make it deteriorate further.
Will?
Bill, I think that's amazing, man. That's so cool. I thought it was Hammond's, that's his fault. It's a history map. I mean, if, if we were going to do that, which I think we should, I would probably look into seeing if it can be somewhat restored.
Well, that-
Is it 1850 something? Okay, they have one over at the Historic Society so they get to. It's not here. This is where people show up.
Absolutely, yes. 1859, it's 155 years old. And if you look that good after 155 years, Rick, congratulations.
Where'd you get that?
I got it, I wheel and deal through.
That's crazy.
Downtown, different places. Came from an estate.
No, you can't ask if it's uncleaned.
No, I don't.
What is it?
All right.
Is that scratch?
I don't, but if, I don't know if it can be cleaned. I think, Tom, you said it was probably lacquered or something?
Yeah, it's a lacquered map.
Yeah, it's, it's actually clear of this.
How much of the, of the browning on it is because of age of the lacquer and how much might be actual dirt. But having it cleaned and properly mounted would be much more expensive, of course.
I think the University of Maine probably cares in the right direction on that as far as how to clean it and preserve it because they've got all sorts of people.
All right, we'll get to public comment. Bill, you got anything more on this?
No. I just, I just wanted to ask, answer Ed's question, Mr. Armstrong's question. He says, what's my intent, basically? And, and as I, I said, my intent was to donate it to the town of Hampden. That's where I would like to see it there. What do you call it? Perpetually, forever? Because town of Hampden, the citizens, I believe, deserve to, to have that map, to be able to come in and see it. The problem with the one, like I said, at this Historic Society, even the president, I was talking to her, she doesn't even know anything about it. Does say who donated it. I'm not looking for any kudos about it. I don't need my name on it. It's for the town of Hampden. That's all I ask for is that it is, you know, I don't want it stuffed like it was for the last two years in some corner collecting dust and deteriorating because it is a real jewel.
So, what a public comment, but I, public comment, but what are we commenting on? What are we trying to do, Bill? What's your proposal?
Well, the proposal is like what the town manager said. It would cost, unless you did something like what Mr. Armstrong was saying, you know, go to University of Maine and have it cleaned and everything. I don't know. But a town manager looked into it and she got a rough estimate of $1,000 to $1,500 from Bangor Frameworks to, to mat it. And basically, I, I don't know if that preserves it or not. I guess it does, Sue. And to frame it.
It safely secures it to a proper backing for this kind of document. And then it does not use glass. It has to use a plexi kind of-
Plexiglass, yeah.
... because of the weight, the size of it and the weight of it.
And it should also be like protective of ultraviolet light.
It has the correct kind of-
I was at Kohl's, Kohl &amp; Lamb Museum this weekend and they have larger areas than that with all kinds of historic photos behind it with this plexiglass over it. And I, it's not glass because I touched it. And it, it looks nice and you can see through it and it's going to, I believe, would preserve it from the air getting to it and deteriorating further.
Okay, public comment?
I have a suggestion.
Ed, you got to go up to the mic, please.
I thought you could hear me without it.
I can, but the people at home can't.
Oh, okay.
And you like to be on TV.
My name is Ed Armstrong. I live on the Kennebec Road. I've been in Hampden now for 45 years. Bill, I think that's a great map. I have seen the other one down at Historic Society. This is in pretty rough shape. It definitely needs some TLC, tender loving care. I would probably suggest that a postponement of any decision on this take place until we can find out from the University of Maine where to go as far as in what direction, how to clean this, how to preserve it, and how to take care of it. And then we can discuss its, its future. I, I think it's a positive thing for the town to have this, definitely. I mean, because there aren't many of those around. And so we, I think it's, this is an important decision that you folks have to make. What do you do with this? You throw it away or do you keep it? Do you put it in a barn somewhere or do you spend a few dollars? And I, I think that would be probably a way to bring this town a little bit closer together if you had a fundraising activity to raise money. Everybody throw in five bucks, 10 bucks, 20 bucks, whatever it is to raise, whatever it is to, to clean it. But we, we don't know how, what that figure is right now. So my suggestion is take it down, or leave it there, preserve it so it doesn't get damaged, and then have somebody from the University of Maine who's experienced at that give us some information so we can make a decision. And then you can decide how you're going to raise the money. I don't think it should come out of taxpayer dollar. I think everybody should have a, a piece of that by donating a dollar or $2 or $5 or $500, whatever they want to do. But let people own it and that could be going on a plaque underneath it that says donated by Bill Shakespeare, preserved by the people of Hampden, or whatever it is like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just, I just wondered if you had any person you knew of at the University of Maine that you could-
I do not, but-
Okay.
-that type of information is pretty easy to find out. Make a few phone calls and see if they're related.
Lisa Carter from Hampden. You always make me proud, Ed, when you get up here. I never know exactly where you go in the first, but you usually get in the right direction. I agree totally with him about not using tax dollars. However, I'm up here tonight because I'm, I think all of us were confused in the audience because I'm pretty sure that this was on the agenda last time and discussed and voted on. So I wasn't sure what this presentation was today and that's why we're all confused in the audience as to why it was back and why it was voted on and I guess the, is there a motion? No, there's no motion. Okay. So we're not sure what we're, I agree with Ed, but we're not, that's why we're confused out here is like what do we, what are we publicly commenting on? If there's a motion, I would ask that we get to comment on that if it's possible because we really don't know if there's expenditure being proposed or if this is just something
Alex King, 75 Ichabod Lane. And I just want to comment on one thing. I agree with, with Ed also that I think it should be delayed and maybe more discussion on what you're looking at doing. I've done some deed research over the last few years and I have an 1802 first survey map of the town of Hampden that's in the registered deeds. And there's another one in, I'm not sure, 1820 that's a town that has all the, or has the orig- in 1802 has the original town survey map with all the names of the owners on those properties. And I haven't researched up beyond that time to see closer to 1859 or whatever it was there. So if you want the Penobscot County, okay. If you want the town of Hampden, I think there's other maps that are more historical. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. I'm Jeremy W. Jones Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. I enjoy history, historic places, historic buildings, historic events, museums, and historic artifacts. My family and I support these whenever we have the opportunity. I believe these should be preserved whenever possible for future generations. So let me offer a reasonable solution to this proposed map project. Try cooperating with the Hampden Library, the Hampden Historical Society, or another related IRS 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Get a firm quote on the cost for an archival specialist to correctly clean, treat, repair, preserve, enclose, and display the map. Do it right. Set up an account to receive tax deductible donations for the project with all the procedural and accounting checks and balances in place to prevent fraud. Then advertise, request, seek out, and ask for private donations towards accomplishing this project goal. Professional copies of just the more relevant Hampden section of the map and possibly other similar maps could be sold as a fundraiser premium. I know that I, for one, would love to have, would love to donate to have one for my home. And I'm sure that there are many others that would do the same. There is no need to burden the general taxpayer with this. There is no need to create even more taxpayer resentment over unnecessary town spending. People that support it will donate and the project can be completed. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Terry McAvoy, 59 Monroe Road. I think the town council should develop a policy related to what items are going to be offered and accepted and displayed, you know, on town property. Apparently, there is none. Like Alex said, I mean, there's, there's lots of maps out there. There's nothing special about this one other than it's just a darn old map. That's about it. But there's a lot of maps out there that other people could come in here and say, hey, I got one older than this. Do you want that stuck on the wall here? Let me give it to you. It's only going to cost you $1,500, $2,000 and then where are you going to put it? Are you going to have a, you know, are you going to rotate them in and out? I mean, you know, you need to come up with a policy that says what, who, and what, and under what circumstances are going to be displayed anywhere inside or around the town property. That means, you know, in this building, in our right of way, there are signs, there are, you know, public displays, you know, just all kinds of things that are out there. I'd like to see a policy. And as far as this map here, I agree with Mr. Armstrong. Take up donations. Get it restored, get it framed, but don't stick it on that wall until you come up with a policy that says what else can we or can't we not put there and why? That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? This time, public comments closed. Do we have a motion or anything or... Where's it going?
May I speak?
Yeah.
Now, I, I think it's important that we investigate further and decide what the town of Hampden might want to do with this map. In order to be able to do that, I think we just need a commitment from the town council that they see it as an important artifact that the town wishes to maintain, proceed, finding out the best way to preserve and maintain this map. And I just need a, a commitment from the town of Hampden to say we're actually going to preserve it one way or another. And if it means that we can get a cooperative, work cooperatively with, with not the library and it's 501(c)(3) because it's still part of the town, it's still our money, taxpayers' money. The Historic Society is a good idea, but talk to the University of Maine and, and document preservationists. They can, they can help us figure out what to do with it. But what's needed is a commitment. It's been sitting here for two years waiting for somebody to actually do it and no one's really had the time and it hasn't just worked out and, oh yeah, we'll get to it someday and maybe not. In the meantime, it's sat in the corner. If we're going to continue, if, if the town of Hampden feels or the council feels that they want to have this as, as part of our documentation in the town, then we should just, we should commit to it and move forward to find, go to the next step. What is, what would it cost to have it cleaned, mounted, maintained, properly displayed and preserved over time? And then decide if the town wants to spend the money on doing it. But we need to commit to the process and investigating the process, not just say, okay, somebody take care of it, put it in the corner and we'll get to it when we get around to it. And so I, I think what's needed is, is a commitment. And so for that purpose is I'll, I'll make a motion that the town of Hampden Council commit to the preservation and protection of this map for future generations and investigate the costs and options and alternatives that are available to us.
Can we include fundraising, right, as part of that? No?
We can. We can. I mean, we don't necessarily, let's find out what it costs first. If we, we, in the process of going out and doing it, if you take this over to the University of Maine and somebody gets all excited about it, they're liable to do it for nothing and use taxpayers' money for that. And then we don't have to use taxpayers' monies for that because they have more taxpayers' money than we do. But until we know a cost, we're not, we say, well, let's commit to it, we need to fundraise it. We don't know how much that is.
We're getting into discussion for a second.
All right, if we got a second on that one? All right. So now we're open for discussion. Ivan? Yeah, Gene.
I believe the motion was we commit to it.
Yes.
So, so we're committing, we're committing to doing it.
To doing something.
To doing something to it, which is-
Yeah. And right now, the, the minimum treatment we had was, was to get a professional framing company to prepare a frame for it. But that may not be the best thing to do for the long-term life of the map. Let's investigate it further.
And I, I feel like I want to do it with donations as much as possible and I'll be-
But that's not the motion.
I know, but we're in discussion time.
Yep.
So I'll pledge $100 towards the preservation of the map just to show my support in public fundraising for it. And I'm sure other people will step forward too. And I don't think, I haven't heard anyone thank Counselor Shakespeare, right, for this gift, but that was a generous and thoughtful thing for you to do.
I guess my concern is in following what was brought up is that we don't have any kind of a policy as to what we accept or don't accept for people bringing gifts in in past history. I know I've tried in the past to give something to Hussin and Hussin said, no, thank you. And it was, it was very old, but they just don't have room to start collecting a lot of things from a lot of graduates and other stuff. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about that if we start accepting things. Who do we accept them, where do we draw the line on this? And I kind of feel as though I'm not against this, but I guess I'd rather see something down that says, here's what we do. Who, who gives it to us? Who, who's going to, you know, what are we going to allow to come in? Are we going to allow something to come in large out front that's going to set out there that someone wants to give?
I, I think we always have the-
You mean like a war memorial?
Yeah. Can I-
That could be.
I, I don't want to just jump in. I want to-
Go ahead, Gene.
All right. I think we should take them as they come and sometimes decline gifts because they're going to be inappropriate, don't have a place to display, or too expensive for us to take care of, or, you know, whatever. But I, I think it would be a lot of effort to develop a policy that somehow encompassed every conceivable kind of gift.
But I don't know if you can start picking and choosing, well, I don't want this one because of this.
Well, just, you know, don't ever bother trying to give anything to the town of Hampden because, you know, is that the solution?
Well, it may be, but we don't know that.
That-
A, a policy might be a very good idea, but right at this moment, we need to make a decision on this particular map. If we then want to move on and, and introduce, start a, something for some committee to do someplace to come up with a set of policies, I'm in favor of that. And I've always, I always feel that you need to establish the rules. That's the purpose for codification. That's the purpose for codification, is so that you know the rules of the game people are attempting to play. And if we're talking about donations to the town and we need a set of rules, I have no problem with developing them, but we do have a map here now. We have a quilt hanger on the wall that was donated to the town. We have different photographs and paintings around here that were donated to the town at one point. And we're going to-
We have plantings and flowers and Christmas decorations.
Send all those back, because we haven't got a policy yet. Doesn't make sense. We need to address this now, and if we want to go on for a policy, that's a good idea, too.
If we want to talk about what makes sense, what doesn't, we've done this thing three times, and it never got to this point. It was always not, nothing was done on it. And the last thing I remember, Bill, as you said, is I'm going to roll it up then and take it home.
We've done what thing three times?
This thing, three times.
What do you mean, we've done it?
We brought it up in front of the, in front of this, in front of this council.
We ha, I have not brought this up in front of this council before, period.
Yes, we refused it.
In comments.
Who refused it?
He said comments.
There was no, there was no motion made on to do anything with it.
Last week, last meeting?
Last, last time, and you got mad and said, well, I'll just take it home then?
No, no, it was not on the agenda during the last council meeting.
Well, and the one before that.
No, it wasn't. It was not an agended item, and I have never presented it up there on the wall.
But you, but you brought it up to the fact that you wanted the town to do something with it and bo, and get it framed and put it on the wall. Is that not correct?
I brought it up when?
You want me to get into dates?
Yes.
I don't know when the hell the dates were, but we can go back and set and look through film if you want to and find it.
I've, I've, I've been-
It's been, we did this.
I'm, I think I'm the one who, in a committee meeting, pointed out that, you know, it was a wonderful gift, but it needed to be appropriately framed and preserved. We have an old document that's written on a sheepskin. It's an indenture. It's like three hundred years old, and it has quite an elaborate frame, so you can see both sides of it, and it won't be damaged by light. So I was sensitive to the fact that you don't just, you know, tack it up on some board and stick a wooden frame around it, that you go to some trouble. So I brought that whole thing up. It was not anything that Bill ever brought up until I mentioned it in a particular committee meeting, so.
And if I may go back about at least two years ago, before you were on the council, Counselor McBike, we discussed it, not at a council meeting, but in committee. And our town manager agreed that she would look into doing exactly what she just looked into, and it never, I don't know, I never got any result. I, I can't say she never did it. I never got, we never, the council never got any result back. However, in the meantime, Bob Osborne, out of the goodness of his heart, had made a frame for it, and that's sitting in the conference room. During another committee meeting, when the library staff was there, it was brought up that you best not just put that in a frame with a piece of glass, because it's going to deteriorate. And that's how we came about doing, doing this, and nothing kept, nothing happened. So finally, I said, fine, just like I'm ready to do now. I said, fine, if the town doesn't want it, the town doesn't want to take care of that, I'm not going to give it to the town. I'm offering it to the town. I haven't given it to the town. I am not going to have that piece of history stuck in some closet in the town of Hampden and forgotten about.
You know, the Bangor Public Library would probably-
Maybe the library, may, maybe down, down at the cross center, maybe they would love it, maybe the city of Bangor would love it. I don't know, I haven't checked. Out of the goodness of my heart, I thought I was doing a good thing, I was offering it to the town of Hampden. But if the town of Hampden doesn't want it, so be it. That's, it's not going to hurt my feelings. I, I just wanted to do something good, because I thought the citizens would enjoy that in the future, not just now, not the people who are worried about saving a buck or two right now on their taxes, but in the future, that thing is going to be gone, and you'll never see it again.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we want to remove the motion so we can actually allow the public to discuss what the motion was? Because they really didn't have anything to comment on, because there wasn't a motion.
Is this a precedent, we're going to start doing this on all of our motions?
Well, we didn't have, they didn't even know what they were commenting on, because there wasn't a motion.
Well, that's, that's pretty common with all the things that we do. We have an item that comes before the council, it gets discussed, the, the public has their input, and then the council makes motions and takes actions. We don't say, we're going to put a motion in place, and once a motion is in place, it's, okay, now we're going to back the motion out, so we can have a new reason to have some discussion. And the, the discussion, I think, was well presented. It was, here's a map, and what's, what's being looked at and considered by the town of Hampden is, one, do we want the map? And two, do we want to spend money on it? And what are people's suggestions for going forward?
But that isn't what they knew going into it. All they know is historic map. That's all they had to go by, when they had public comment. Now we have a motion.
But I got over there and I explained the whole thing, David, then the town manager explained it, and then the public made their comments. I, I don't see-
Okay, motion on the floor, what do you want to do? My thought is, is, you know, get all the information before you start making. I'm not going to commit to a thing until we get numbers.
No, no, well, I, I just wanted to say that, that the reason, the, the reason this is before the council is because I encourage Bill to put it on, put it on the agenda, because again, as you had mentioned, it has bounced back and forth, it has never been on the agenda, we have never made a formal decision. And if Bill, Bill wants to preserve it, he'd like to see it in the town, belong to the town of Hampden first. And if Hampden doesn't want it, then he needs to go forward. But I didn't want him to be in a position of never really knowing whether, what Hampden's council's position was relative to the map. So we needed a definitive response. We want it, we don't want it, we want it, we'll take care of it.
And I don't think, like Ivan said, it never got out of committee.
It never came out-
It got turned down in committee.
No.
It didn't go anywhere.
It didn't get turned down, different committees assumed responsibility for taking care of it, and staff said that they'd work on getting it done, and we never got, because of other things that kept getting higher on the priority list, we were never able to get around to it. And it has further deteriorated during that time. And so, a decision is necessary, so it can be taken care of by the town of Hampden or not, but it's time for the town of Hampden to make a decision one way or the other.
So we're going to take a vote? You got a motion and a second?
And you're the chairman.
And all in favor?
Well, what's the motion? Could we have it ready being pulled out?
I think I need clarification. I got the first part of it, that the council commit to preservation of the map for future generations, and then I lost it.
Well, well, accept the map for, as a donation, and commit to it for the preservation of, for future, future generations, and the next step would be to, to investigate what the best procedures are for doing that preservation.
And this doesn't allocate any money?
Nothing, no money, well, other than charges that might be necessary to get somebody to examine the map and come up with a proposal. That's some, that's, very few people in the world work for free.
But then again, with that motion, that, that map could sit for another five years, and, and nothing could get done with it.
Okay, so let's take a vote.
You know?
No, we, we need to move on.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Item 3F, news presentation and awards. Counselor Brand.
Okay, news presentation awards was, was introduced and added to the agenda at the initiation of the town mayor, and ended up being placed in a very bad spot in the agenda, based on the two items that have been brought to the council. Under those two categories, there, there were places where council members wanted to make motions, but if it's, because of where it's placed on the agenda, it's outside the policy agenda, and therefore requires a setting side of the rules and determining what can or cannot be done with items that are brought to us under those categories. Most of the time when we make presentations, there's some type of an act or an award, our recognition provided by the council, which takes a motion. If we're providing an award, in addition to a presentation, we have to take some kind of, of action authorizing that award. So it's just poorly thought out and poorly placed on the agenda. I think that we should probably, in my opinion, is we should move it down into the policy agenda and not leave it outside of the policy agenda. Within the policy agenda, we can make motions, decisions, and take actions. We can't do that without setting aside the rules in other places on, in the town council agenda. And since this is an item which is covered under the rules for the town council, all we can do at this time is introduce it for first discussion, because any action, any change to the mod, any modification made to the rules of the town council must be introduced first at an, at a previous council meeting, and then discussed at the following council meeting. And so this is the first time this has been brought to the council meeting for further discussion and to make modifications. So we can discuss it now, but we really can't take any actions until the next council meeting.
Okay. Public comment?
Are we talking about the map?
No.
No, no.
No, the map's gone.
We're putting it right around, okay.
The map's gone.
The map is gone.
Okay, public comment closed.
Okay.
Discussion? None?
Well, again, if you, counselors, I'd like to have this put on the agenda for the next council meeting for a detailed discussion and actions. And I strongly recommend that the council read through the guidelines that we have on council rules as to what kinds of actions can be taken on items which are outside the policy agenda. And I think if you do that, you'll, you'll notice that, you'll discover, as I did, that the kinds of things under awards and presentations that we have always done historically under the policy agenda, belong under the policy agenda, and this item does not really belong floating out here, where no action by the town councils can be taken, except to put it on the next agenda. And so, we'll talk about it next time in detail, I think.
Good. Any else?
Is that something that could be talked about in finance and administration? Or when you say talk in detail, that seems like the place to maybe hash it out.
That's-
Looking for your opinion.
Well, from my opinion, I don't think it needs to go to a committee. I mean, we, we push a lot of things on committees, but we still make the final decisions, not the committees. And it shouldn't be this difficult, it's just placed in the wrong place. And we just have to know and discuss it and understand the rules, so it's properly placed on the agenda.
Okay, any more discussion? And it's moved to the next council agenda. Item 4A, zero-sort recycling. I don't think we need to go through that again, I think that's been covered. Planet Aid Clothing Disposal Box. It was discussed, what we could do with the clothes and the shoes and stuff that are left over in the recycling center at the transfer station. We looked into several options, and the best option that the infrastructure committee could recommend was a Planet Aid box for that stuff to be donated. Is any public comment? Jeremy?
I'm Jeremy W. Jones, Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. There are several local charitable organizations that handle used goods and clothing, Goodwill, Salvation Army, Helping Hands, Man in Ministry, the Family Store, which is run by Salvation Army, and others. I myself have donated good usable clothing to the Salvation Army. I support them as they helped my family when I was a young child, and because of their lowest cost of overhead for service delivered. I abhor waste, and I ask that residents donate their, their unneeded items to their favorite charity first. Please don't just throw them out. You are able to claim value as an itemized deduction on your federal tax form. If not, then they will be appreciated at the free garage sale in our transfer station. They have a great return policy. So at the end of the week, I would much rather see the closing, clothing ultimately used positively than paying to have it incinerated as waste. Thank you.
The town investigated Salvation or Goodwill, asking, as the two major entities, asking if they would be interested in having a collection box located at the transfer station, not for just anything that got brought in, but at the end of each weekend, when things have been collected in the, be clear, the store, shall we say, that those, that that clothing, which up until now has been put in the incinerator, that we would not do that anymore. We would instead put it in for Salvation Army or Goodwill, neither of which was able to provide that, a container for that. Planet Aid, the, this clothing is reused. It's not reused in this country. It is reused, and the town is paid five cents a pound for anything that is collected as part of it. And the idea was to not incinerate it and not have it used, but to have someone. But there was concern among the council that we make sure that people from Hampden have the first shot at the store, and so the swap shop is still the first repository of it, and it's not until it's about to go from there to incineration land that it would go to Planet Aid, which would pay us five cents a pound, and is a reuse. It, it doesn't, it has a, a higher than Goodwill or Salvation Army administrative cost associated with its programs, and it's used out of this country. However, for what was available to us, without having the town to have to truck it somewhere, it was the best option we had, rather than incinerate.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Do I have a motion?
I'm-
Excuse me?
We don't have a-
Oh, Bill leaves?
Yeah.
He didn't take his coat.
I'm sure he'll be right back.
Don't know why he walked out and just went outside.
His coat's still here. His wife is in the hospital, he might have got a call.
Okay, so we want to just postpone it till the next?
Yeah, I can just wait a few minutes.
Okay, well, then if no one objects, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
Committee reports. Jean Lawless, Services.
Hasn't met since the last council meeting.
Okay. Planning Development, Mr. McBike, is that you? You meet Wednesday.
We'll, we'll be meeting Wednesday, right.
Right, okay. So, I'm in charge of infrastructure, and obviously, a lot of the stuff you've seen, we discussed the Route 1A Sewer Project bid and award. The zero-sort recycling was discussed. Planet Aid was discussed at our last meeting. We also discussed the hot topping that was for last year for the sidewalks. The bid come down a lot higher than we had planned, so we had put that back for rebid for that project. We looked into the hot topping for the next year's budget, trying to figure out where we're going to come up with the money to do what we need to do. And that was basically an overview of everything infrastructure took up. Finance Committee, there's nobody here for that.
Did not meet this evening, due to lack of a quorum.
Okay, so next would be the managers' report.
Can we go back now that Bill's back here and vote?
Well, we'll finish up managers' report, and then we'll come back.
All right. I wrote one.
I know, I see it tomorrow.
Thank you. Now I have two. The newsletter should be in mailboxes in Hampden by Friday of this week, and for those of you who want to see it now, there is a link on the front page of the town website to the copy that is located there. On Saturday, May 3rd, forty-three people participated in the annual- On Saturday, May 3rd, 43 people participated in the annual streamside community cleanup in Hamden. The cleanup areas included Weatherby, McGraw, Reeds Brook, and Hamden Academy campuses, the Kiwanis, VFW Ballfields and Irving area, Marina Road in the Marina area, Carey Circle, McCaw Road, Nadine's Way area, and Meadow Patterson and Canaan Roads near the transfer station. Thanks to Planner Robert Osborne for coordinating the event, to Hamden Highlands United Methodist Church for making the cleanup part of their mission, to Hamden PAC 41 of the Boy Scouts for their efforts, and to the other folks who gave up part of their weekend to beautify the community. This annual cleanup also satisfies part of the Hamden Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System permit, affectionately known as MS-4, and the town sponsored a thank-you barbecue for the volunteers after the cleanup. The Public Safety Department sponsored a retirement party on May 3rd at the Morgan Hill Events Center for 36-year town employee Frank Coombs, Lieutenant Frank Coombs, who retired on May 1st. It was a very well-attended event. Frank received recognition from several state agencies as well as a plaque from the Public Safety Department. And finally, the conservation easement for the Marina Park is now finalized and should be signed this week. Following that, the town will be able to access the funds from the Chevron grant and repay the host community benefit fund for the upfront funding of the work thus far. I signed the contract for the parking lot construction at that site last week, following council approval of the contract, and they are estimating starting the third week in May.
Going back to item 4B, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we put a Planet Aid Clothing Disposal Box at the transfer station to be used to take the goods that are left at the end of the weekend and see that they're properly recycled.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Councilor comments? Councilor...
Yeah, I just, before I get to Bill Shakespeare and make his comment, I'd just like to ask if the council would object to me going to the University of Maine tomorrow and rattling some cages of a couple deans of the library that I know well and see if we can get an evaluation of the map and estimates of the costs and procedures that would best preserve it.
Good idea.
Sounds good. Any objections?
Thank you. Now you can go to Bill.
Okay. Councilor comments, Mr. Shakespeare?
Counselor Shakespeare.
Counselor Shakespeare, Bill?
As our town manager said about Lieutenant Frank Coombs' retirement party, Tom and I both went, and it was fantastic. I think the town manager little, I'm not going to say downplayed the awards and everything because Frank received a fantastic award, I think it was from Public Safety, with a fireman's axe on it. Is that from Public Safety? I wish he, I wish we had it here. But anyways, that was a fantastic event. So I want to thank everybody also for attending that and giving recognition to a longtime town employee. Thank you.
Counselor Lawless?
Yeah, I wanted to say with respect to the map that I heard several people say that it would be wonderful if it was supported by fundraising, you know, and I'm serious about supporting it myself, and I hope other people will step forward and that it will be a community effort, right, to preserve this map.
Counselor Brand?
Well, I'd just like to add a little bit about Lieutenant Coombs and his retirement. I've, in the last, because I'm getting older than dirt, have attended six retirements from different fire departments around the, around the area in the last few years. And one of the things that sort of impressed me a bit was, was the, the state fire marshal was there to make a presentation, and at the, at all of the other retirements, he has not been present. And it just shows the amount of respect that the state fire marshal's office and other people within the state of Maine in that profession held for Lieutenant Coombs.
Can I object to what Tom just said about being older than dirt? Because I'm old, I'm older than Tom, and...
You're guilty, Bill, can't help it. And I don't have any comments. Counselor McPike?
Yeah, because at the last meeting, you, I guess, elected me to represent you at the school district, I'd like to bring you up to date, if I could, on three meetings that I went to. Last one was last week, Wednesday night and Thursday night were the, were the, were the budget that they put out Wednesday night for the public and Thursday night for the Budget Committee. I don't know if anyone's seen it streamlined yet or on anything, or what was done, but in filming that and having it, having it streamlined through your computer, checking today, I would have been, I guess, probably happy if a hundred or so people had looked at that. But at current time, right now, those meetings so far, there's been 578 hits on those of people looking, which means that there is some interest in the community in that being done. Back to the other stuff, the superintendent walked in with a $900,000 increase that he wanted. Before it got to the committee, he was able to reduce it by 400,000, so he only wanted That was passed by the Budget Committee on Thursday night after about 15 minutes. I asked them at that time, since all of this stuff deals with financials, I said that our budget finance committee here asked our town manager, because that is the only person that we employ, that when they come to us, our recommendations are, come with a 0% increase from last year or a reduction from last year or no more than 2% or 3% increase is what we're looking at, and how does that affect us? And I asked that Budget Committee there, since they have one person working for them, the school board, and that's the superintendent of RSU 22, and they control $29 million worth of taxpayers' dollars now, what they're, what they asked of that superintendent. That was not answered. I don't believe they do that. I believe that, from what I understand, it's the superintendent comes to them with a $900,000 increase and says, here's where we go. The effects on us this year is definitely going to be there. Our local share, the local share is an increase of 4.99%. We're looking at $300,000 to the town of Hamden alone. You're definitely looking at a half a mil increase. I don't feel as though there's any way that that's going to be absorbed by us whatsoever. If we, in order to increase that at a current mil rate, we'd have to increase our valuation by $18 million. I don't see that happening at all, and that would be in this budget year. Since 2010-11 budget to this current budget, the school, RSU 22, has increased roughly $900,000, has been their increase. So there were no people there in the audience arguing about nickels and dimes. There were basically teachers and principals. There was the, there was the town manager, Winterport, there, and there were a couple people from Frank, from Newburgh there. Newburgh, I think, is going to get hit pretty hard this year, a couple of mils anyways. So it is, it is, it is an increase that, that is there, that is in our laps. We are the, we are the collector of the taxes for that. The comment I have to make on that is, is because what we do for a budget is so small compared to what goes on there, that I do not think that we should start taking a beating from the general public that we always have to try to make up a $300,000 difference in what we do. And that we can't allow our roads, our police department, our fire departments to, to fall apart because we have to fund the school. And it'll come out as a vote, and it'll be up to the citizens of the community as to whether they want this or not. And if they so desire to have those type of increases, then I assume that their desire is to have the tax increase that goes along with it. Be glad to answer any other questions that, if anyone has any of me when I was there.
Yeah, just one thing. A number of years ago, long time ago, when I bothered going to school, school board meetings and looking at budgets, there was a, a fund that the school board used to have. I don't know if they still have it or not, or it's been eliminated. And that was, that was a fund where they, they put money away to pay off contracts for teachers and administrators after SAD 22 goes bankrupt. And it's a considerable amount of money there. And I was wondering if that fund still exists. And two, the way the RSUs are structured, the only way that an RSU could go bankrupt would be for all of the towns in the RSU to beat them to bankruptcy because we have no choice, and the taxpayers have no choice but to pay their taxes and pay the bill. And so the idea, the whole concept of them needing funds to hold in case they go bankrupt, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I was wondering if that came up at all in the discussion?
Yes, it did. It was brought to my attention prior to going to the meetings, that this was set aside. The last night, I specifically asked that question. It is $1.8 million. And, and I have to admit that the, that they were very nice people to deal with, that I didn't ask it when I was supposed to, and it was, there was no problem. I, I talked and asked questions whenever I wanted, and I accepted them gratefully. So that worked out very nice. But I did ask that question, and I, and I said, I paraphrased it by the fact that I wasn't really sure what was happening, was it, was it spent? My understanding is, is those monies are set aside to pay the teachers during the summer because there's five pay periods during the summer that they have to be paid, and if we go bankrupt or they don't get money during the summer, that the state says they have to have this money there. So the question I posed them was, is that money used to pay the teachers and is then, okay, completely emptied and so that is, that is not set somewhere that next year you start your budget over again? Like, if we had $300,000 left over, it would go back into our budget and just come forward. It wouldn't be stuck somewhere in a separate fund. And I was informed that, yes, all of those monies were in fact used. I don't know the paperwork on it. I don't know any more than that. But I was informed that night, and it's, it's on video, that, yes, those funds are completely used up and paid, and then we start over again fresh.
Can we see paperwork to show, to prove that from them? I think the town manager's got a comment on that.
Well, after this item was raised, I was a little confused because I had asked the question at a meeting with the school superintendent and the town managers about what their fund balance was, and was told that it was a negative number, and I almost fell off my chair because I, I thought it was a much higher than a negative number, and was told that they had fully funded the account required by the state to have in reserve in the event of a bankruptcy. And I had never heard of a bankruptcy in a school, at least, because I thought we would all have to be there first. But I did ask about that, and the amount in that, it was 1.8. So in order to better understand where that fit in the balance sheet, I asked for the audit, which shows it as a, the only thing I can find in the balance sheet that refers to $1.8 million is an accrued salaries payable line item, which is $1.8 million, which is not part of an operating budget. It is an accrued salaries parent. It's a, but it's not listed in a fund balance, it's listed as a liability. And the cash on hand at June 30 was a little more than $2 million in the, that they had on hand. So I guess that that, the jury's out on sort of where it falls. I, I know this, it was suggested at one of the school meetings that the way the town could meet this obligation for an additional $300,000 on top of the 350 additional we had last week, last year, was to simply take it from our fund balance because we have a big fund balance. And the $1.9 million of undesignated fund balance that the town has on paper does not line item across to a bank account because some of that is uncollected taxes that people haven't paid yet and those kind of things. But what that $1.9 million allows us to do is pay our bills between every six months when we collect taxes. We have a big influx, and then we have, but we have to, right before, as a matter of fact, this year, right before the last, our last tax collection in April, I paid the school payment late. And I paid it late because I was waiting for the tax monies to come in to fully cover that payment. And the superintendent was aware of that because I discussed it with him before I made that decision. But the, there isn't $300,000. If $300,000 goes out of that, we will not, we will be borrowing in anticipation to pay our bills prior to. This is a third, we spend for everything more than $13 million a year. That's a little over $1 million a month. We collect 9.4 or 3 million in taxes twice a year. That's our big monies, and everything else kind of comes in accordingly. But the school gets the same amount of money every month from everybody that pays it. We're, we are required to pay our school obligation every month, as are the other ones in the district, and I believe the state pays theirs in a similar fashion. So our methods of operation are somewhat different in that their funding source is a more steady funding source than ours. Ours is two big shots and then a big dip right before the last one. But anyway, we don't have $300,000 sitting in a pot somewhere that we've been doing nothing with to...
They were, when I, when I brought up the fact that we would have a difficult time in trying to pay $300,000 increase, I asked them whether, how they expected us to pay that. And their comment to me from Superintendent Lyons was, what do you expect us to do? And my comment was, I expect you to cut your budget. At which time, Mr. Janes got up and told us that we could take the $300,000 out of our surplus because we're carrying 3.5 million. And I wasn't really sure we were carrying 3.5 million. It was not something I could speak to, but that was on Wednesday night, and I told them that Thursday night I would be back to respond to that because I'd have figures. And, and they did ask me the first thing Thursday night to respond to that, at which time I went through what Town Manager LaSalle just said, the fact that you looked at, snapshot, we don't have any monies that are carried over to any tune whatsoever, so that it's not possible for us to take $300,000 out of something and say, here, fine, it doesn't affect anything. But that was their assumption that we have that available. So if there's, if you got anything else on it, I spoke quite a bit there, and probably it's not loved by everyone, but...
Yes, sounds like you're doing a good job over there, Ivan.
We, it took them, the Wednesday night that I went was, was a budget meeting and then opened for the public. And Thursday night, Thursday, Wednesday night was open for the whole school board, and it was for the town, and towns to come and they presented it. Thursday night was a Budget Committee. Thursday night was a budget committee, and I went Thursday night in expectations that we'd start getting down into dollars and cents and debits and credits and things like that. I spoke quite a bit at that meeting about things, and the meeting started at 6:30, and at quarter after 7:00, it had been approved, the budget, to go to the full board. So, that was their budget meeting, which is, which is a sweet meeting to have. It's awfully nice to do it that fast and get it done.
Okay. With that, I make a motion we adjourn. Right, well, we're going to adjourn the council meeting and go into the 2014-15 budget. Correct?
Can we take another quick break?
Five-minute break and come back and start the budget.
Sounds cool.